Excuse me, everyone. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance? The flag is to the side of the room over here. This meeting is being conducted in compliance with the Open Meeting Act. The Board of Education passed a resolution and this meeting held on January 5th, 2016. The meeting's set forth a schedule of regular meetings for a presidential meeting for seven days of passage. The schedule was sent to the Bronx City Times, the St. Leger, the Herald News, the Township of Bronx and the Bronx Education Association. Postings of this meeting setting forth the time, rotation, agenda, and post of each of the Bronx schools, board office, and town hall. This posting was also sent to the newspapers, all SC presidents and SC liaisons. The Board of Education operates under consent agreement format. Any board member has the right to have a poll to be voted upon or discussed separately. Copies of tonight's agenda resolutions are made available to the public present. Mr. Ben? Mrs. Bernardino?
Here.
Mr. Yunus?
Here.
Mrs. Frosky?
Here.
Mr. Quintero? Here. Okay, welcome to our final meeting in May. We do have two presentations tonight. Before we do them, we open up to any public comment or question on any agenda. Okay, we'll open up to Mr. Cogville for our VHS student of the month.
Thank you. It's my honor to... We have five people this evening. One is from March. She was a Silver Maggot, so we're going to read it. Grade nine Rebecca Subert. Rebecca takes three honor level courses. Honors Modern World History, honors Biology, honors Geometry. For the third market period, she earned an A minus or greater in each of her classes. Rebecca has also been present for every day of school this year. Quite an accomplishment. Ms. Colwell says Rebecca possesses all of the qualities of an outstanding student. Rebecca is inquisitive and self-motivated. She's a critical thinker and problem solver who shows a true passion for learning. Her strong work ethic is evident in her success in the classroom as well as in her devotion to the music program. Congratulations to Rebecca. Okay, I know it's May, and it may, but this is April student of the month. Also, grade nine Emily Marie Anderson. For the third market period, Emily earned an A minus or greater in each of her classes. This includes honors English, honors History, honors Biology, honors Geometry, Spanish II, and nothing less than the band. We know how hard that is. Mr. Harris nominated Emily for her exceptional performance in Biology. I would also like to acknowledge Emily's perfect attendance for the 15, 16 school year as well, so congratulations, thank you. Hey, grade 10 Renata Primmer. Renata excelled during the third market period. She also earned an A minus or greater in Geometry, Introduction to Business, English II, and Chemistry. Mr. Scott said during the third market period, Renata has set a new standard for excellence. She has a 100% average in all of her tests for the third market period and has over a 99% average for the entire market period. Renata is truly growing before my eyes from a strong student into a truly special and powerful student. She has seen what a tremendous height she can reach with persistence and hard work. Renata has only missed one day of school and she has never been late. Okay, grade 11 Zach Secode. I didn't see him here unless he walked in since I've started, but he's grade 11. Doesn't look like he's here. I'm gonna read it anyway. Zach earned an A or greater in Chemistry, Algebra II, Architectural Design, and Graphic Design. And Mrs. Erica said Zach helps others, always turns in his work in a timely manner, and is respectful to his teachers and his peers. Zach is a gentleman who has proven to be a fine role model for younger students. Even though Zach's not here, we could just... And grade 12 Dominique Marino. Dominique has earned an A minus or greater in all of her third market period classes. This includes AP English, AP US Gov., AP Comp Sci., AP Stats, entered Financial Accounting Honors, and choir. Mr. Cashel said Dominique is one of those students you wish you could have in your class each year. She's a great model role model. Where are you going, Dominique?
Florida University.
Florida University.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cogville. We'll turn it over to Mr. Miller for his curriculum update.
Have a good seat? All right. All right, well, good evening, everyone. We're here to give our update. We do this twice a year, and we're gonna talk about things that are happening in the classroom. So we have our impressive title page. And we always go and talk about our school mission statement first. We underline key words. Education is about active learning. It means getting out of your seat, moving around, and experiencing what's going on. Rigorous curricula, which we think we provide, and then enriching experiences. This is our third year, as we sign, for our student growth objectives. I think we're getting better at this. I call it the end of the road. Overall, for every teacher, student growth objectives are worth 20% of their score. And we have a little roadmap, and we've completed step seven and eight and nine where we've met, teachers have met with administrators and supervisors, and then the scores were rated. Our teacher evaluation update. So we have Dr. Marzano's evaluation system. There are four domains. The first domain is question strategies and behaviors. Under four observations, we formally observed teachers over 450 times this year. The average district score was 3.24, and for those that aren't sure, effective range for teachers is 265 to 349. So it's on the upper end of effective. And taking a quick snapshot of the Marzano scale, with beginning scores, developing, applying, and innovative, a majority of our teacher's scores fall on the applying and innovative side. About 95%, so that's tremendous. Continuing on, we also have our walkthrough observations. These are conducted to get quick feedback to teachers. These are done in between formal observations. And we did over, we have so far this year over 900 walkthrough observations that have been recorded. And meetings with teachers, I'd say 95% or more are very positive and offer praise. Teachers do not get enough praise, so it's nice if we get to go in and have a chat about what happened in the classroom. And there were six things that we looked at in addition to having conversations. It's like, you know, what perfect class did you see? Because that's important, beginning, middle, or end. How are the students being engaged? And I know the fund is small, but you have whole group, you have small group, you have large group, you have pairs. So these are things we talk about as administrative team, and also when we meet with teachers, we have these conversations about what happens. I know as a math teacher, I probably had more at the top as whole group, but as you learn to go through education, you try to go to some small group in visual work, et cetera. What was the student engagement level? Generally, it is medium to high. Means the kids are engaged and they're active, so that's great. Depth of knowledge, we've covered the past couple of years. Yellow on the top, yellow and green, and it looks like purple. Extended thinking, again, two-thirds to three-quarters are questions that our teachers pose to students where they have to think, give answers, and then get deeper. And was tech used by students? This is not by teachers, because a majority of our teachers do use technology now, but how many of our students are using technology? So overall, this is a snapshot, I believe, from February. We're generally about one-third, two-thirds still, but we're working on getting more technology in the classrooms. And overall, question wait time, the measurement of a truly strong teacher or a teacher leader is the time they give after they pose questions. So if you look at the purple, the questions asked, that does happen. We broke it up from zero to one, one to three, et cetera. Continuing on with Dr. Marzano's evaluation system. Planning and preparation makes up 10%. We did our final evaluations. We collected two weeks of lessons from teachers, and they were evaluated. Also, what is consideration? Were walk-throughs, follow-ups, informal observations? Reflection on teaching, this is what teachers do a lot. They consider what they teach daily, and where they've been really well, and they're like, well, in other places where they think they might have done better. Again, they get a chance to review with a supervisor or principal of their goals. And then the fourth domain is collegiality and professionalism. So there are three elements. The first one is how the teachers interact with their own colleagues to support student learning. So these come from principal supervisor observations and conversations. Positive interactions with students and parents. We ask teachers if they have, you know, emails, communication, meetings, conferences that went really well. And element 59 just talks about adhering to research rules, being on time to school, you know, attending functions, et cetera. Advanced placement participation since 2009. If you look, and I know it's little, I tried to make it as big as I could, but 2009's on the left, and it goes all the way up through 2016, and then 2017. And 2016, we had around 440 exams that were taken. And for those that are new here, every student who signs up for an AP class takes the AP exam. What we look at next year, and we'll talk about the advent of a couple of new classes, we jump up tremendously, we have over 300 students. This is tentative, and we'll have around 680 AP exams that will be taken. We feel this is very, very good, because there are a lot of students, and this is why there's Common Core and others. A lot of students still sometimes go to college, and feedback we get from universities is that they're not prepared. If every child has a chance in high school to take at least one AP course, they get in, and they understand the rigor and the expectations, and repairs them better. Even if students repeat the class in college, it gives them a strong foundation. So these are the new courses for 16, 17 AP Physics, Principles of Computer Science, and right now, our tentative numbers are with Ms. Ludovic and Mr. Warrick, so over 100 students are, will be taking an AP Computer Science class, which is about 1/6 of the population. And then we're also gonna offer AP Microeconomics, which is exciting. And then if you look at real quick, when we started in 09, we had about 14.5% of our students were taking AP. This year, 38.4, and next year will be about 47% of our students will be taking an AP class. In addition to that, to the college experience, we offer dual enrollment. I know it's really little, so if you have the Agro Binoculars, you can see that we have Supa Accounting, and then we have Careers in Education, which is tomorrow's teachers, which is still little. Core English, I have the 2013, 14, and 15. We don't have next year, but since with Dr. Smith, it's in the 50s. Students decide when they come back if they want to take that. We have our Syracuse University Project Advance, that's Supa. We have Entrepreneurship, Psychology, Creative Nonfiction, which jumps to 14 students, and they'll offer Business Law as well. So it's exciting. We'll have around 150 students enrolled in the Supa class. So overall, a lot of good exposure for our students, and we've proven over time that our students here can do well in college courses in high school. Google Teacher Academy, this was our first year, so we learned a lot of this together. We had a lot of good meetings and good feedback, some venting sessions, but also some growing moments. So that's the first bullet. The second bullet was a lot of our teaching members offered PD to our other staff members during freshman development days, and that went really well. We surveyed each time, and teachers overall were very satisfied to have choices and have the ability to learn different things. It wasn't just one workshop, they were all a lot. Again, and also, within the classroom, I would say just our teachers at Google Teacher Academy, but as well as other teachers, learned how to even better integrate curriculum instruction, and when our wireless was off corrected, things went really smooth. And then we have a link that takes us to our classroom page, so we're Googled up there. Google's a verb there. Our second cohort, we worked on welcoming 19 new staff members. The breakdown is there are 10 in elementary. Brookdale has one, and the one in Brookdale is the secretary, so that's exciting to have her onboard. FM Brown, we have five. Forest, two, and Lanning, two. At the middle school, we have seven. Two in science, two in language arts, one math, one art, and one in our technology, engineering, and design course. And at the high school, we have two. One in science, one in language arts. And the previous slide and this slide, folks have an opportunity to go to freshman development and Google Academy on July 13th and 14th this year. An update, got this from Ms. Denise for Oregon Gillingham. The district is funding us, so it's awesome. We have eight staff members that are learning at Oregon Gillingham, and there are four courses that they take. They took two this year. Next year, then the fall will be course three, and course four will be in the spring, and then they will complete the certification program. We're hoping after that to enroll more teachers. The more people we enroll in this, the stronger our foundation is, especially for reading. We find our students that struggle, especially when they get to middle school, don't do well in anything if they can't read. So if we can get to our youngsters in K1 and 2, we can really hope. Again, we anticipate that they'll meet at HB in 3:45. And the media center on Tuesdays, that's gone very well. Again, Ms. Denise spent a lot of time with the teachers, setting up what students will come. There are students that start in the fall, and then there are exchanges in the spring. We understand this. There's lots of things that happen outside of school. If you're a parent, you know what I'm talking about. And then we'll continue with 16 more students next year. PARC update. This year was smoother. We still administered the test, but it was more successful overall. There was this one teaching period, considering what we have for our technology, we have around 800 Chromebooks. We decided to start at elementary to maximize the use of our technology. We were actually, PARC came out and said we would have less time on testing, but what they did is one-third of the state also had to do a field test, so in a way, we got it over with this year. So it was actually a little bit longer, but over the next two years, it'll be significantly shorter for us. So if you remember that second day for language arts, which went through lunch, that will be gone. That will be a memory. So we started elementary first. It helped for our tech guys especially, because they were all over the place last year. They were out of the focus of the elementary. Then we shifted to HBW or middle, and then to high school. I think for our high school teachers, it was a win, because a lot of our AP courses, we got to complete, get the AP exam, and then they took PARC. That was just a snapshot of the calendar. We'll probably go with the same design next year, as long as we still get PARC. That will be up to the state. Curricular initiatives, I'm going to begin this, and then I'm gonna pass this on to Dr. Bangia and then Mr. Stevenson. Curriculum initiatives, so new and/or updated course offerings beginning September 2016. So at the high school, for business, we're offering AP Microeconomics. It's actually a two-year course. One's micro, and one's acting pattern within business. We're gonna introduce the idea of a business law class, which would be appealing to some students. My daughter would love to have that question, those are good. And then marketing, advertising, and sales, we'll get a new book. Vocal, which we're excited to have, is not 100%, will be, she's gonna offer elective striking new chord, which, I haven't catched the title. And then also, she's gonna offer, in addition to zero period, she's gonna have chamber choir, which we've offered during lunch activity. She's worked it out with the students. I don't know if you've heard that saying, but they sound beautiful. And she's gonna take most likely students, it's an audition only, it'll be 10th, 11th, and 12th graders, and they're gonna focus on more, I'd say, challenging music. I would not make it. Think I can sing, but I can't. We're also gonna revamp Health and Phys Ed in grades nine through 12. We're gonna offer more choices and options for students. A lot of districts around us are doing that, and we're finding that high school kids actually like that. All right. It's very nice in elementary, middle, they kind of play a game, then they get the hypes of like, oh, I don't wanna get sweaty. I just took a shower, I gotta, you know. So we're gonna offer that. Let's see, and I'll pass the remote to Dr. Bangia. Come on up.
Good evening, everyone. I'm excited about being here today to talk about all the wonderful things making place in the communities related to apartments. I'm gonna begin looking at our elementary work. This past year, we had the great opportunity to have two full-time academic coaches in the district. One works at Brown and Forest, and the other one works at Lanning and Brookdale. And the goal of our academic coaches is really an extension of the work we started about two years ago with our reading convention coaches. Now that we have two full-time positions across the district, this has allowed us to not only support and reinforce our struggling readers, but also support our teachers by providing some instructional strategies from the academic coach. That's been a great opportunity for the teachers to be able to have this resource available to them. And this involves the academic coaches pulling students out in order to provide small group instruction work, as well as also pushing into the classroom to model instructional strategies to the teachers to ensure that these struggling readers are being afforded the opportunities needed for their needs. This year, we had academic coaches work with grades one through four. We had about over 100 students in which the academic coaches worked with. Our goal for next year is to also include kindergarten at some point in school year, and we're hoping to continue to expand the program. In addition to the academic coaches' work that we've been doing at that elementary level, we've always also expanded our reading workshop, not only from K4, but also expanded to grades five this year. As you know, we introduced reading workshop back in the 2012, 2013 school year in grades three and four, and every school year we've expanded it. So now that we're K5. And as we've become more familiarized with the workshop model, our focus has really been about solidifying our instructional processes within the workshop. And this year has been small group instruction. And for those who aren't familiar with reading workshop, it's really where small group instruction is where the teaching takes place, in order to ensure our students are increasingly providing challenging texts. And ways that we've done that has been through guided reading, student conferences, as well as reading strategy groups. So that's because of our program with teachers, in which our students are improving their reading levels throughout the school year. Looking at the high school, we had an opportunity to really expand our course offerings, and the focus of our course offerings have been on increasing rigor as well as student choice. And with these two ideas in mind, we've introduced classes such as AP World History. And for those who are unfamiliar with that, this is our first course offering for AP for freshmen. So this year, we had 15 students enroll in AP World. Next year, we have close to 30 kids enroll in AP World. So it's a growing program. So AP World is in addition to or existing Modern World CP, and Modern World honors options as freshmen. In addition to AP World, students between the grades nine through 12 also had the opportunity to take AP Human Geography. Currently, we have close a little over 20 kids enrolled. Next year, we have close to 40 students enrolled. So as you can see, our students are really excited about that opportunity as far as choice, and also as well maintaining rigor regarding these classes. In addition to these AP level classes, we also had introduced our Humanities and Speech Arts elective for senior year English. So that instead of taking your traditional English IV course as seniors, they now have an option to take Humanities and Speech Arts, which are two semester-based electives that I should call like this more so required classes. So our focus has been at the high school is about increasing rigor, but also about maintaining student choice. Another focus within the humanities across HBW as well as high school in both social studies and English has been research. And when we talk about research, we're looking at having students be able to gather information, analyze information, and synthesize that information. And those are skill sets regardless if they want to pursue a humanities-related field or a STEM-related field. Those are critical concepts. So our teachers in both English and social studies have been working closely with our fantastic media specialists at HBW and the high school to put together research projects. Now, moving forward for the next school year, we are looking to continually to expand upon the work we've been doing for the past couple of years, and that involves differentiation. As I said, we had expanded reading workshop from K5 over the past three school years. We're looking to work on differentiation in grades six through eight, thereby meeting the very reading needs of our students. So we're gonna be starting that conversation next week with our sixth through eighth grade teachers. In addition to that, we're looking at to extend our work with text-dependent analysis. This is all about close reading to ensure that our students are able to read both primary and secondary documents, and really gather the true meaning of these pieces of work. We're gonna be continuing our focus upon research. We focus upon capitalizing on the house model at HBW. As you know, with the house model, teachers share the same student population on their team, so what we're gonna be moving towards next year is about having interdisciplinary research projects in collaboration between social studies and English to maximize the instructional time between these two disciplines. In addition to that, we're continuing our reading work into the high school with the introduction of book clubs, in which our freshman students are gonna be able to be afforded opportunities to read books that meet their high interests as well as meet their reading abilities. Turn this over to Mr. Stevenson at this moment, he's gonna be talking about STEM.
I'll adjust that, sorry. I'll start with technology, engineering, and design, and I'm gonna give a shout-out to Ms. Julia Hart and the Rube Goldberg project. She's done a project in her class, and had it judged by the different science teachers in the science classrooms, and the winner of the building went on into rubegoldberg.com or dot org, had an online contest, and we won people's choice. Charlie, if you'll click, we can see the task for this Rube Goldberg is to open an umbrella. Give us a second. And we have a winner. What's important to note is they did get first place. The first place had like 47 actions, it was pretty cool. We got people's choice. What that represents is an upswelling of community support for Ms. Hart when she's doing it in the middle school. 439 people voted in an online competition, and I forget how many teams were in the middle school division, it was quite a lot. So we're very proud of that accomplishment. So we're very proud of that accomplishment. You got to click from that side, Charlie. Thank you. We'll start with VHS. We've got a new technology engineering design teacher. He's busy putting his stamp on the programs here at the high school. He's already got a growing cadre of students who are very into what he's doing. Last time we visited, they were optimizing simple machines. They had to build four different categories of simple machines and then optimize it, and get a 20% improvement. When I visited his classroom just last week, they were building Aboriginal pummerangs. And so they have to design it, build the airfoil, steam it, bend it, get it right. And they also researched the Aboriginal art and paint their pummerang when it's all done. The best day is when they're out in the field testing them. So far, I haven't reported no issues. We have a new class for the fall. It is AP Comp Sci Principles. It's sort of another opportunity for kids to take Comp Sci, to take two words for rich words. All fields are becoming Comp Sci. And so the more Comp Sci that we can do, the better off our kids are going to be. AP Comp Sci Principles has been driven out of COE.org and the Microsoft Corporation, and Harvard, and Yale, and some pretty big powerhouses. Danielle Motokic is going to be teaching it next year. She had the opportunity to go to Washington D.C. and do a presentation from Harvard. She has Willa de Colma from Harvard for her little workshop. And the course is essentially Harvard's CS5. And so kids will be getting a very enrich experience. And they can take these AP Comp Sci classes in any order. They can start with AP Comp Sci P Principles, or they can start with AP Comp Sci C, which is the one that reports its mention for years. And we've had very good participation. At the middle school, Julia Hart, who we already spoke about, is working on putting her stamp on those courses. She came in last year and sort of started from scratch. And so we're looking for her to sort of continue that process and refine things. Fifth grade will be an introduction to technology, engineering, and design. Sixth grade looks like mostly innovation, taking ideas and grouping all that. Seventh grade is going to be Future City, which back in January recorded. Some kids have won a fabulous trip to the Turnpike Center. I'm not sure if they've gone yet. And then eighth grade is going to do the Rube Goldberg project, where you saw the little example of fabulous part. Take a moment for some science. Remind everybody of the NGSS adoption and implementation timeline. The next generation science standard was adopted by the New Jersey Department of Education back in July 2014. Full implementation for sixth through 12 is expected in September. Full implementation for grades eight through five is expected the following September 2017. If you've not looked at the NGSS, I recommend taking a look. The standards are really unlike all the others. They have three dimensions. I have a point in the laser, but it already said everything, so I'm not going to. And the key point is that they're three-dimensional. There are science and engineering practices highlighted in blue at the bottom. There are disciplinary ideas highlighted in orange at the bottom. And there's crosscutting concepts that span from kindergarten through 12th grade. And those are highlighted in green at the bottom. To help us do this, we've chosen Carolina and Smithsonian's SDC kits. It stands for Science and Technology Center. It's an inquiry-based approach where kids investigate first and get explained second. We did a pilot, as a reminder to everybody from January. First grade did solids and liquids, second grade did changes, third grade did motion design, fourth grade did microworks. They'll continue that next year. We've added two more kits for each grade level. The feedback we've gotten from teachers and kids has been fantastic. Middle school, similar. This year, we pivoted exploring properties of matter in fifth, in sixth, experimenting with forces in motion. In seventh, understanding whether climate. In eighth grade, electricity waves and information transfer. Those will remain. Over the summer, we'll be writing UBD units to go with those individual kits, and then we'll get new ones. We'll let the teachers explore those kits and get them under the belt the first time, and then we'll get ready UBD the following summer. With the science at VHS, we have one new course, it's AP Physics I. We've been having a lot of discussions about how to ramp rigor, get kids more involved, get more physics, get more prepared for college. And AP Physics I seems to be one of the ways to do that. In the past, there was AP Physics B. It was a gigantic course that nobody could get through all the curriculum, and kids didn't do that well. The college board took AP Physics B and split it into Physics I and II. The plan is the following year to offer, AP Physics II. We expected a downtick as we replaced honors physics with AP Physics I, and our numbers actually went up. We thought less kids would opt for it because it was more rigorous and more challenging and possibly a little bit more scary. And what we found was the opposite, they were ready for the challenge that they've signed up for. We're working on our NGSS alignment implementation in all the core courses of science at VHS, Biology, Environmental Science, Chemistry, and Physics. The key thing is to revise content and move away from coverage, going towards merging ideas and new ways. Trying to find open inquiries and solve problems. One of my chemistry teachers suggested that he could probably have his kids isolate derivatives of phenylcholine, and then our medical biology class could test that on real data. And so we've got some interesting ideas working out there. Some time for some math. In math at VHS, we're going to look at our AP calculus. We're going to do some revision and some refinement. Sorry, we needed to end on a joke. I had one about watermelon. Math is the only place where you can buy 60 watermelon, and nobody questions me. Charlie didn't like that, so I switched to fiber. We're going to look at our AP calculus, and we're considering revising. There was one proposal to perhaps merge AP AB, AP Calc AB, and AP Calc BC, but then we fought simultaneously. And then see how many kids opt up to BC that would normally just stop at AP, which would be a huge variance to those students. We're going to be taking a look at HBW's curriculum in math, and do some refinements and some revisions. And then I want to talk about the pathways in math. Do you want to click that link, Charlie? I have a big one.
Important security message. Please call the number provided as soon as possible. You can be hired for the role of important security message. Please call the number provided as soon as possible.
Maybe not.
I got something here, let's see.
There it is. There it is, okay, we get around it. One of the concerns, absolutely, we probably should have made a big machine and made it more complicated. One of the concerns, and people figured this out very quickly. We start to differentiate math in sixth grade, with sixth grade on and sixth grade above is what they're typically called. Sixth grade on is just sixth grade math. Sixth grade above is an accelerated math that gets you closer to algebra faster. And then in seventh grade, we identify a group of kids that take algebra straight out of sixth grade. And so they're on the fastest track, they'll take Algebra II when they get to the vice versa. Some people start calculating, and they're trying to figure out when they'll hit the calculus. And it starts all the way back in sixth grade. Some kids take longer to develop, and they come into their mass, shall we say, muscles, late. And so we developed a series of pathways so that they can accelerate in a summer and skip a math course. In this case, they would be a credit for Algebra I, they could go from pre-algebra to geometry. There's a number of eighth grade students that are trying to take Algebra I in the summer, they've already started. At the North Academy or Montclair, Kimberly. Or they can take an online option, go ahead and scroll down. There's the New Jersey Virtual School, and there's also Comic Academy. And what we found is with all the supports that are in Comic Academy, it's a great way to go, it's free. And it's easy to monitor from our point of view. And so then kids can get to that math that they feel they need for STEM career or to get themselves set up for college. And after this, we'll stick to the question section. We're going to have Charlie come back to those.
Any questions?
Just got one question for me.
Sure. That's it, yeah. And it's interesting, we're going to follow Harvard. And what's interesting is Yale has also decided to follow Harvard. They're not going to offer it, they're going to just follow. So it's kind of neat. I guess Harvard's figured it out. And what's neat too is what Mr. Wirth teaches now is based upon the Java. And this will start, I think, with Scratch. Or they can pick whatever they, C+, I mean, thank Danielle, so she wants to start with like Scratch or so. Our middle school students are all working with Scratch with Mr. Kish right now. That's pretty, I think it can be done on Chromebooks as well. So it can open up a lot more people.
I'd just like to thank Mr. Miller, Dr. Banji, and Mr. Stevenson for their presentation this evening. I think, guys, round of applause tonight, thank you. I think if I were to just summarize, you know, a lot of what the whole commission provided, some really insightful, wonderful information tonight. And I know that that's only the tip of the iceberg, and it's certainly a combination of three critical factors. It's everything that we're able to do here is because of the supportive board. It's the coordination and design with administrative team. And it's our teaching staff who works diligently, works extremely hard in order to bring these opportunities to our students in our classrooms, and is dedicated to that process. Over and over again, you started to see at the high school level that there is the removal of the barriers into higher-level courses. And so many different course offerings that are being offered for students that weren't here several years ago. And if you just look at the trajectory of what's been offered over the past, let's say, 10 years ago in high school, it's incredible to see the amount of growth. And at the elementary level, to see all kinds of wonderful things. The evolution of, you know, what we have now as literacy coaches, and it started off as reading intervention, and how that's really made a huge impact in our elementary schools. Orton Gillingham, reading workshop and writing workshop, it's been in existence in the district for many years. So those are all wonderful things, to be able to see that progress over the past five, six, seven, eight years. So, really wonderful presentation tonight, thank you for sharing that with us.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. And this will be on the, put this up on the website. Okay, let's get into superintendent's report.
Quick update on the progress with those people who don't normally travel up Sampson Drive to see the progress we've made over the past several weeks. Very pleased to share that the progress on the music room addition has really picked up quite a bit ever since we were able to, the contractor was able to take care of the foundational issue. The foundation has gone in, and since then, the pouring of the concrete, the walls are going up. So that's making very significant progress over the past several weeks. So they are now finally moving ahead on schedule. The upper field work, it looks like an archaeological dig back there. It's really amazing as to how much work they've done in a short amount of time. The weather certainly has been cooperating, and they're moving ahead very, very nicely on that as well. They'll be crushing some of that material that's being excavated from that area within the next several weeks. Up Sampson Drive, the installation of the new sewer line is taking place. And then we expect within the next several weeks that the tennis courts will begin. As far as that construction goes, the demolition, and that will start sometime within the next week or so on the tennis courts. And we expect that the tennis courts will be completed sometime around August 15th. Everyone last week received a second update regarding lead water update throughout the district. So in some areas, very positive response as far as good feedback, water safe to drink. We turned those fountains on. We will be having this week a detailed update as to what those testers, those are by school. In that press release that I shared, it indicated how many fountains were still off because those results from the testing did not come back that they're safe drinking water. We're remediating those issues. In some instances, it's a water fountain issue. In other instances, it's a lead pipe issue. So we'll have to address the lead if it is in fact in the pipe. In many of the instances, we're finding that it's a manufacturer issue. So the district will have to follow up with those manufacturers. In the meantime, within the next several weeks, we expect it will take place over the summer. We'll be replacing those water fountains accordingly, retesting those fountains. And then once those results come back that it's safe to drink, we will then at that time reactivate and put those back into service at each of the schools. At Lanning Avenue in particular, there seem to be a higher number of water fountains that were there with, you know, what jumps out is the number nine. A little contradictory there because the number nine, out of those nine, there are six what we call fixtures. For the teachers who are in those classrooms, you know what I'm talking about. Their stainless steel sinks and attached to the top of the sinks on the countertops, there are these water fountain spigots. And from speaking with the teachers, it seems that many of those fountains are rarely used, if used at all. In some instances, even those water fountains are actually not even reachable by children unless they were standing on tables, which of course, we're not allowing them to do. So they're rarely used. Those have all been shut off. In three of the instances, we do have typical, regular, small water fountains located in those classrooms. Those are also out of condition. Those seem to be water fountain issues. We will probably, most likely, keep those out of service. And we're looking to, instead of replacing those three in the classrooms, first grade classrooms, install water fountains in the hallway so that way they can be utilized by everyone in that portion of the Lanning building. And last but not least, over the past several months, we've been doing an active search for a new director of athletics and special programs in the district due to Mr. Cisa's retirement. We had 84 applicants for the position. Out of the 84 applicants, we narrowed it down to, we screened, and then interviewed 15 applicants. Last week, we had a committee of eight people that was represented by building level, district level administrators, and also several teachers that served on this committee, provided feedback and input regarding those four candidates. We have finalists now that are moving on to the next round. But we believe that we received some excellent feedback from those committee members. And we hope to have a recommendation to the Board of Education in the month of June so that way we can have a meet and greet with the Board of Education, Board appointment, and then provide enough ample time in order to establish transition time for the new candidate with Mr. Cisa and the rest of the administrative team, and opportunity to meet with coaches and teachers, and also with parents and booster clubs within the community. So we expect that to take place over the next one to two board meetings, so stay tuned for that. And on the agenda this evening, we did not have, we only had as part of the committee reports, finance. But the education committee did meet last week, and community resources met today. So we'll have updates on those two committees as well. Community resources was there.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Dean? Okay, finance committee, finance. Okay, finance committee met. We reviewed what's on tonight's agenda, resolutions 24, 25, 26, and 27. We also talked through the year-end goals. We also talked through the year-end close, which we'll be opening. The order is to assist some oversight for that as normal course of action that we'll have. Be warranted, conducted at the end of the... Beginning at the end of the summer, going into the fall. And we also committed ourselves to having a resetting the committee agenda for the coming school, coming summer, probably June, July timeframe following our board review, resetting all that, which is scheduled for June, Monday, the 27th. Special Education Committee had a... Called a special meeting for last Monday, based on the feedback and all that we had from the public, staff, and everyone else that was here at the last meeting. And the... So we've reviewed Mr. Moriello's plan. We asked him to put together a plan thoroughly from soup to nuts on the topic of AIDS and all aspects that he's covered so far, so that it's all contained in one place. They don't know, we're just fishing on the... We shared with the board, or probably should. Everybody's got a copy of all the elements that he's reviewed. So we've... Fernando Dino and I reviewed that with Mr. DiAmico and Mr. Moriello. And recommendation from committee is that we set aside pursuing any talk about RFP for the time being. Let the dust settle on executing against the plan on whatever elements under the 10. And broadly speaking, those cover hiring issues or hiring practices and provisions. The matter of subs and effectiveness and efficiencies around getting subs into the room, background checks, et cetera, scheduling of the AIDS supervisory, potential supervisory changes, how the AIDS are supervised, whether they're totally or essentially supervised. The PD program, this professional development program for the AIDS of being restructured. Because Moriello's been working on that for about six to seven months, at the very least. The certification process has got to be completed. There's support that we're providing on that. Some changes to some job descriptions and changes to communication channels with the AIDS staff. So all of that's gonna continue to happen. I think there's some more, it's about a two and a half page doc that Mr. Moriello put together. I think there's also the letters from the staff meeting that he had that was a separate note. That's recommendation from committee, we circulated that to the board late last week. Hey, debate... Community Resources?
Yes, so Community Resources met this afternoon. And our overall theme is, as always, communication. It can always be done better. And not only do we want to get equipment in place to communicate with each other in our school community, but trying to get a mechanism into place that communicates beyond our school community for families who may not have children in school yet, or children have aged out or don't have children. I think what we do in schools is important to every homeowner and tax parent's hand. So we're really discussing ways to get that done. And one of the things that is being looked at is getting out a... More than a newsletter, more like a magazine or a leaflet of what's going on in the district, having input from all the grade levels, teachers, schools, on different topics to communicate that better. And we're talking about using a company called ISSUU. It's ISSUU.com if anybody has any interest in looking at what that might look like. So that's gonna be worked on over the summer. We also have the 2017-18 school calendar in progress, so we're working on that.
Is that the... There's a resolution?
Oh, is that?
There's two things that... There's a change to one modification. It's not the new one yet. There's a change.
Sixteen seconds. Sixteen seconds. So this one was the 17th year that we're looking at. We are also, it's been an ongoing attempt to have a joint meeting with the town council. So I am putting together email and will be reaching out to the council to see if we can have a meeting with them over the summer. In regard to our high school traffic safety, people may have noticed our electronic sign up in front. We are now posting the speed limit and to drive carefully on there, just to have extra visibility and awareness around that. And we spoke in the past about providing the neighbors when our whole new athletic complex is completed, in the spirit of inviting the community in. The homes that surround immediately are impacted to have a pass, so to speak, for all events that happen at the high school, whether it's sporting events, plays, art shows, just to open it up and come in and see what actually goes on here. We have the Sustainable Jersey for Schools program. Mr. Trapps is moving ahead with that and putting together a green team and getting our requirements gathered to meet that program. And we should have things ready in place for the start of the school year in September. It was quite a long meeting today. Mr. Dinesh has spoke about the lead testing. And then the other, which is always a work in progress, it's come up in the past and I'm sure it'll come up again in the future, is trying to streamline our website. Getting the information on our website more consistent, always updated, and easier to navigate, a little bit more user-friendly. And I believe that is it.
Just for one animal, the... Not miss, but the police department presence at school functions. And that will be contracted with them. Separately, we'll... The whole we do now, we would cover the function as part of just shared services, but we're no longer able to keep that agreement, given that they are not operating... They're operating either for security for the event or as a police officer within the town. And then seeing ones who go outside of the district where they can functionally, there's no jurisdiction outside of Corona to attend that event or security at that event for our students. So we would then be hiring that private security or hiring our home consultants to then go ahead and provide security at the event. So in this case, there are instances where it's advantageous to be able to use our saving or more presence. And some of the differences for if you hire a security in the town, then they would not be fully uniformed. They have a security shirt on versus a full uniform. So we talked about some of the implications on that part as well. But it's something to determine the shared services agreement with perhaps, you know, the joint meeting that's also occurring. And also just some changes in terms of what that looks like from a community organization's point of view, public doers to keep people abreast of those changes as they happen.
That would also be something that would be a good point to bring up when we are able to coordinate a meeting with the township. To bring that up as a topic on the shared services.
Yeah, I mean, if you see at the event, right, that you know, if we certainly have a police officer at the event, if we don't see them, what you see is a security shirt. It's just gonna be good to have that in your vehicle.
So specifically, outside of Corona, but inside of Corona, there's a law of jurisdiction. So we should probably check with the sheriff's and maybe point if we was done sending people dressed up in security shirts to someone's vehicle.
Is that... Yeah. Absolutely, yeah. So this is something that we're still looking into to figure out what that point is gonna look like.
If that's what we're... If that's gonna be a problem where a security shirt, you know, like you...
Absolutely. Well, it's the police officer there who has a jurisdiction there to go ahead and receive that.
Yeah, well, the reason was that there's officers of the police department, which are other police departments.
Exactly. Well, in some of the... Some of this officer would be depending if it's brought in district or... The question would be, is in district, there was an issue with that as well, I believe, shared services?
In district, the police still provides officers at football games and any athletic events where they anticipate, especially around playoff games and things of that nature. There are instances where in the future, where we have perhaps a basketball game, it's a playoff game that would be highly attended out of town in another municipality. And that we've been told that Corona police will no longer be able to go to attend those functions because they don't have jurisdiction.
Yeah, that's outside. Yeah, I was getting confused with the project graduation that's coming out.
Project graduation.
Whereas our students at not athletic event, but outside the district.
Outside the district. Project graduation and graduation.
Whereas sort of means see our police officers, if you see someone in a security shirt. Could also be a police officer, but if they're not there, right, meaning you have our consultants and they don't even know where, whether they're able to capacity.
Good discussion point, I think, to bring up when we have that joint meeting. Falls under shared services. It's worth the dialogue.
Okay, we have one other, we have one discussion I... Dinesh circulated around a, I think, two different sample letters, one from Glenn Ridge, one from Montclair, to the department that arguing against a charter school application that's sitting with the DOE for charter school in Montclair. So the question for the board here is, does anybody feel that we want to join with that and add our own letter to the DOE one way or the other? Or observe what happens and then see how it turns out.
So I think one of the parts of the letters that construct me was an ongoing topic for discussion, which is the funding, right? Overall school funding, how it stands now, we've gone over it a few times, how it, you know, kind of gets mess in the middle for districts like Corona, that need to file on top of the funding for how charter schools are funded in our state. And to get creative or disaster by what we need here in district. So I think there's something to be said about what that might look like. But I think I would walk the fine line between saying no charter schools and a destination of the funding of it. Right? I think there are two distinct issues, my opinion.
Yeah, I thought the same when I read the letter. What is the upside and the downside from a superintendence point of view? Have you had an opportunity to be in touch with some of those other surrounding communities?
So I sit on a seat with the Garden State Coalition of Schools, just one of the topics that does tend to come up from time to time. Most recently, in communicating with superintendents and board members in nearby communities, specifically in this case, Montclair and Glenn Ridge. I think Montclair sees it as a more pressing issue. It's great. It's in their backyard. It's in their township. And obviously, that would pull very valuable resources from the school district. That's concerning from the superintendency. We don't have that issue to worry about at this point. That's not to say that in the future we wouldn't. We can't predict the future. I'm a believer that, I think, we have extremely strong schools. We offer a lot of different programs, a lot of walk-throughs, and we're always trying to evolve as an organization. I think the fear with township in an adjacent community like the Glenn Ridge and for Corona to consider is, at what point does it impact the adjacent communities? And how it's written? And would that charter school be able to pull students from adjacent communities? So I think that's worth an exploration. Because if it ever went down that path, then I think we, being so close to Montclair, would have something that we should seriously consider and have some meaningful dialogue around. I have an upcoming meeting with Garden State Coalition of Schools, and I also have an upcoming meeting with the superintendent Essex County Roundtable, where the superintendent from Montclair and the superintendent from Glenn Ridge will be. So we're going to be having some follow-up conversation in the next couple of weeks.
So is this something that we would have to decide tonight and we won't respond to, or is it something that we wait for?
There's no response.
What we want to contribute to that conversation.
Yeah, so the two things that are in front of the table are, one, if a charter entity rented, leased, purchased some property that was vacant in Corona, chose to attempt to operate a charter school in Corona, they would appeal to the DOE. And the DOE right now is essentially sole discretion to award the charter license or not. The school then would be funded for every student that goes into the charter on the per pupil cost in our budgets. You know, per pupil cost is very low, therefore, I would imagine that not a lot of charter schools would come to take actual money is, well, it's 20%. Although some talent that seems to be very rich that you get, they are free per student now. From a monetary point of view, that's much away to do. But be that as it may, the funding topic does come into it. Because the numbers that we operate with today fall on the taxpayer's own, right? My own, it's only about three cents of the dollars that we're collecting, cents of the dollars that comes from any form of aid assistance. That's about 800, 900 dollars using the latest formulas, shy of where we should go. Right? So the topic about funding is to point out that whether you're for or against the charter idea, we for the state to follow their own funding formula, which they can never satisfy. So why do you business of extending, not giving out charters? Do you maybe want to think about doing the business of the business that you already in, which is supposed to be funding the things that you specified? That's where the two tie together. And then, secondly, one of the things we've talked about in the past about this, taking a position as a board, that if there's a need or benefit to having a charter in town, let the people in Corona vote for it. Because it's gonna ruin their money that the one that collects for the wrong schools, it's gonna be funded to the charter. So the people in the town will have a say in whether or not the state's gonna force you to pay for it. Right? Otherwise, it's the state funding it, and it says you have to do this, which we said so. You have no voice in it. That's not... There is no limits.
So on that topic, back in November, I attended the delegate assembly of the 31st of 2015. And one of the... There was only one resolution before the assembly of that time, and that was regarding this particular topic, which is...
NJOSBA?
NJOSBA, yeah, where this... 130 members, if members, which one board member represents for each school board across the state of New Jersey. And they attend the delegate assembly. This assembly essentially votes on resolutions that we do in a public meeting here. And that resolution becomes what the New Jersey School Board Association's lobbying department, we'll call it, goes before the state and says they want its support, right? And ensures that that interest is protected. So the resolution that came before them passed by 133 to 1 vote. And it was regarding charter school funding. So I'll read the part of the resolution that had passed, and it said the following. "The New Jersey School Board Association believes that any changes to charter school funding made by the state should be fully funded by the state directly to the charter. No matter what your position on charters, this resolution is about equity." And one of the things that was cited was factors posing financial difficulties for school districts, including the 2% tax levy cap, flat funding for... And changes in enrollment. And delegates from Bendons to Hillside, South River, they were, William Field and Pine Hill, they've all supported this. And these are some districts that have charter schools. And one of the things that especially Newark has found with the impossible charter schools, beyond the fact that there's been some great, great laboratories for learning and experimentation and student achievement for the roof. And I mean, it's incredible what's happening in some of the schools. However, the challenge is that Newark ran into an issue where they started to run the one Newark program, where there was no longer enough funding to run the public school district and run the charter school district simultaneously. And it was just a matter of time, right, like one open, two open, and they got to the tipping point where they literally could not keep the doors open on the public school and charter school at the same time. Had to start to merge that enrollment into one single entity. And so it, you know, was kind of past the point where it should have become a topic. But it's already been there for almost a year, come this November, and six months. And clearly, you know, the state has said, oh, my God, as you've seen, one crisis, we had to try to revert by virtue of the two entities, and now we have this resolution. So I think a letter, you could obviously... So I think a letter, you could obviously, as a resolution, could be great. I think the Assembly has kind of taken some initiative there. Montclair has obviously well-written something, but I would just reiterate, based on that delegate assembly meeting, I think they got a right, which is hitting into what Mr. Cojett said, really hitting home, that the funding doesn't work, right? And that's the challenge that, that I think we would be writing about more so than we don't want charter schools. But I think we really need to just sort the two things, in my opinion.
Absolutely, consensus. Director letter, send around anyways, fine, red line and white line, and white it out. Why is this to write something that's too relevant?
Yeah, and I think even, you know, using some of those, possibly use some of that language, or cite the delegate assembly, just reinforcing that, I mean, we did have a vote there, technically it's a confidential vote, it passed 133 to 1, and I was there. I mean, but if you want to make it, you know, for the purpose of, you know, not confidential, putting something out there, then it's worth it, you know, citing that as, you know, one of the parts in that letter.
Okay, right.
Before you do that, Mr. Rushdie, I'm just going to jump in for a second. Athletic committee did not meet, but I did speak on the phone with Mr. Cisa, and I just wanted to quickly bring up one of the resolutions that we're voting on tonight, number 16, is the Celito family had donated the money for the sign for the new field, since we're talking about the starting up of the construction and all of that, so I just wanted to make special note that they donated that money for the sign.
Resolutions. Result of the board's approved resolutions, number one, for resolution number 27. Someone, second.
Move on, Mr. Rushdie, and second, Ms. Verona, any other questions?
Yes. On 2.3, under new staff, the administrative assistant at Lanning, it's the salary plus the stipend, so I'm just wondering what the stipends were.
The stipend is, as per the contract, is for a bachelor's degree? There's an additional stipend written in the contract for that.
Okay. And then on 2.4, with staff changes?
Yeah.
I was just, there's just, it seems to be a lot of switching from Brookdale 3rd grade to Forest 3rd grade, so I was just wondering if there was any kind of.
So the Mrs. Cassell, who is currently at Brookdale FN Brown, she's been here, is finishing up her first year, had a very successful first year, and there's a retirement over at FN Brown, and she put in for a request to be transferred to that position, rather than being, traveling between two schools, she'll be isolated and focused in one building. And there's some other movements here, because there were several retirements in the district, and there were some other teachers who are, for example, have been in certain schools dealing with, kind of picking up the bubble as it was traveling through Forest or at Brookdale. That bubble is pushing through now in 4th grade, though, even middle school, some other positions that have been available, we have outstanding teachers who are in the district, so we wanted to give them a permanent home base, so we coordinate.
Aye.
Mr. Udis?
Aye.
Mrs. Rushdie?
Aye.
Okay, that's the, oh, one other thing, we do need, so our next meeting is June 14th. We do have Mr. DiNecio's evaluation, so we can do it either that night, confidential, which should take about half hour, or do it the meeting of 27, which is our, what's up tonight?
27.
Oh, we can do it confidential before that day. Everybody okay to just do this on 14?
Yeah, so we'll come in at 6:30.
Yeah, depending on the agenda, for the agenda, it's angry start at 6:30, so if the agenda is right enough, we do it at 7:00, so. Maybe more earlier than the 7:00. Okay, we'll put up any questions or comments.
I think it were fairly minor changes, but I could hold a calendar for it, and I could share it again after the meeting.
Karen Thomas, 9 Wilson Drive, 102. I, I come in as a parent, a resident, a teacher, and first of all, teacher, we invite you, this is our big meeting in 7th grade, HBW, it's the prop, which is called by the prop, so you're all welcome to come in, you have time for the week, so you can sit down, come see the prop, we love doing the prop, so we're very excited about that. I was glad to hear that, it sounds like we decided to move away from the RFP development right now, and so we'll move away from the idea of outsourcing. We're hoping that's the main one, the one, that is obviously a goal, a goal we're hoping. It sounds like, pardon?
I've got that, yes.
Apparently, Mr. Morel has a plan, and we'd love to be included in that conversation when the time is appropriate, I hope the time is pretty soon. We're all looking forward to, you know, we all are looking for an exceptional educational experience with all of them, and that's, that's the goal for everybody. It's still a little more accomplished that goal, I mean, we're the ones on the front line, it's time for the board, the superintendent, representative, parent professionals, and all the interested parties to sit down and discuss some of the issues about, they've come up, about the aides, about the tech staff, that have been serving to the parents, the teachers, and those, at this point, really, there's still more questions than answers regarding, I think, what started the whole conversation, so maybe we can sit down and get some answers about the goals together. So I think we're all, you know, looking for college schools, quality education, we understand that there's a retention issue with the aides, we get to the bottom of it, you know, work that out. So this is, this juncture, no reason to go. And I think we can all remedy that solution, remedy that pretty quickly. And the quickest and easiest way to probably remedy that would be for a union negotiated contract with the parent professionals and the tech staff. I believe, I'm not, this, incorrect, that at this point, you're paying lawyers to go to Kirk, to come here, to run the election, that has already been, it's a foregone conclusion, what that result of that election will make. I'm not sure, but that absolutely is that. So if we just simply recognize the parent professionals and the tech staff as part of the association that they've asked to be part of, that they ask to be recognized, we can more move forward to work on some of these solutions for the personnel, for the Bob, the students that are on. I think it's really important to note that my conversations with parents, I'm not saying this for everybody, the ones I spoke to, they're not really requesting benefits, I know you're concerned about looking for benefits, but they're really looking for some jobs for any, some salary assurances, because you've seen the salaries scattered all over the place, some continuity, some communication for them in some respect. So it's not necessarily a lot of cost that's going to be involved, but they want to contribute a little bit of that, and have some communication. So as a resident and parent and teacher, I think I have a professional and moral obligation, so it's helped work to maintain the great schools that we already have, and I think that includes supporting great personality and working for the issues, we're looking, working for great personality issues, and I think it's time that we can all be together and work this out, hopefully, soon as I'm there.
The board, the board did, so the choices for the board are to, what I'll say is, blindly accept the postcard election that the BEA reported, or.
With NJEA.
NJEA, or have Kirk conduct their process of election. We've opted to have Kirk conduct their process of election, so it's all documented, that's clear, and done by a third party, that's by the, it's some money at expense, et cetera, et cetera. The fact that we pay a lawyer to do it, for example, is, we pay lawyers to do lots of things. You guys pay Ms. Polycastro her organization a lot more than we pay the lawyer, probably about 20 times more, but the BEA will be in a time. So I'm not saying she gets the money, but I don't, I need a pop or something. So, so the board is going to honor, however, that Kirk process lays out, that's what we've communicated already. In terms of the plan, that Mr. Morel has a plan, is a plan that he started when he started working here, the only thing that's been added to the plan was somewhere around January, February, was added the topic of compensation, the aides, right now, that's been kept flat, like we said last meeting, for a long time here, and the other highlights, and it's about two or three pages long, those are the things I talk about, a whole bunch of HR, administrative type, the ones that we're trying to solve, trying to solve, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. One of those is communication staff, we can, but for example, one of the things we found is that a lot of the aides didn't have, we didn't want to check the email, as an example, so that has to be rectified in the next couple of weeks, so it's about two, three pages.
Would we be glad to help, you know, to, like, we look at, some, 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 communication?
Good evening, Lady Score, 57, morning, Cairo. Thank you very much for reconsidering the situation with the parent professionals and outsourcing. There were a couple of things that I thought about at the outing the meeting, and I actually drafted an email to most of you up here, who've just been quite busy in the school year as well, so it didn't get out to you, but one of the, a couple of things that were most concerning to me was the 40% turnover rate, and most of that is to West Orange and Cedar Grove, and, you know, if you talk to any of the people at Paris here, they leave there because of the benefits. And, but I know that's a difficult topic, and I don't think that was what the expectation was from the parent professionals, but I was really astonished at the fact that they're, when their job duty changes on one particular day, like if there was a student that they're assigned to, that if this is the case, that they, if that student isn't there, they are sent home, and then they also do not get any personal or sick days or snow days. So when you look at those factors and compare them to most other districts, and definitely comp districts of ours, that's not happening there. So that's the way that the conditions really are unfair, so when you, you know, keep working with the committee, and it was very impressive with what you came up with, about what the plan is with Mr. Morel and what you have to look at, because there was a significant amount of things on that list that you read, I think that is, that's really, you know, very important, because if you're cutting back on that rate and trying to increase the retention rate and decrease the turnover rate, we might want to be, give a little bit more, give people reason to stay. And when you're talking about cost, we're doing a great job here, but when you hear about everything that was being added on in the district, two full-time academic coaches, the administrators have increased significantly in a few years, the amount of administrators, and if you look at that based on our size districts, two comp districts, we have, you know, just take a look at it, so it's not that they're not needed, and we don't want more people helping our kids, but we have a lot of people here that are helping our kids that are not being treated fairly. So before we hire more people to tell people what to do, let's work with the ones that we have here and try to keep them.
Somebody said they're not needed, I'm not sure you got that, what you said, it's not that they're not needed, so it's the exact opposite. From the time, before Mr. Morel was here, the topic of aides and the retention of aides and the turnover rate of aides and the reasons for that turnover was something that Ms. Skinner was very, very, very engaged with. When she left, I mean, Mr. Morel was right here, what was the first thing we talked about in any of our committee meetings? And the longest-standing topic that we've spent in every single committee meeting, once or twice a month since then, has been the topic of aides. So anybody that's under the misconception of the microphone, that somehow we believe that aides are not important, not needed, not relevant, and that somehow it's private information that we have a high turnover rate and the reasons for that, are sadly mistaken. This is something we've been focused on for a long time.
Okay, we didn't know that it was 40%, so I'm saying that's what I learned from the last meeting.
Maybe I'll be clear, that this has been on our agenda for a long time.
Okay.
And it is because it's important, and it is because the board thinks it's something that has to be fixed, and it is because the board finds it unacceptable that we're spending all this time in Edinburgh. It's not because anybody's up here thinking that aides are not needed, not important, that we don't care, not at all.
Well, okay, but there's a reason for that turnover.
There's a reason for everything, and it's absolutely.
Yeah, 40% of the turnover of any, any population you're recording is something.
Absolutely a reason for the turnover, which is why, when I say, from the, from February, we started talking about ways to change the comp structure for aides, and that didn't happen last meeting, that was in February, we started working on that.
All right, we, and we didn't hear about some of those things, so some of the things that you, that other districts do or provide.
Well, we sent the letter out to the association, because prior to that, there was one report, the other report, it wasn't hired yet, and it was seven people up here. I'm glad, I'm glad it's out there, I'm glad that people recognize what we've been doing for a long time about it and why we're doing it, and the fact that we do care about putting in tremendous amount of time there.
Okay, but the answer at the last meeting is to outsource, even the investigation of outsourcing.
What was, what was the topic at the last meeting, was to do an RFP and find out what options we might have, where, with a vendor provider that might be able to meet requirements that we set out, that might solve for some of the things that we find are reasons for people leaving. I just heard two different things, I heard Ms. Thomas say that healthcare is not an issue, and I heard you say that they're leaving to West Orange and Cedar Grove because of healthcare. It's some.
Well, no, that, that's why, if you ask parent professionals who left, that is one, I've spoken to three who have left, and this is before the meetings.
At least, at least everyone who's.
Okay, good, but then, well, I would think that they've told you that one of the reasons they left was the benefit trade. Okay, all right, so, but I'm, I, like I said, I truly was, that was not surprising, because there are many districts that don't provide that.
Right.
More do not provide the benefits than do.
Right.
Some grandfather people in, some people just don't do it at all. That's not the other, the other conditions, and that's why I just, and I never know, if you have different committees and you all want to hear your time.
There's a special ed committee that's dedicated, justice, nothing's a special ed, it's going to be.
Okay, so I just want to make sure, just reiterating, I didn't say it the last time, actually, but I, I didn't realize that there were also that situation with, that I've never heard of, with no sick, no personal, no snow, and being sent home when.
Probably, not with staff.
Okay.
And just, and just, and not paid for.
Okay, that, that's, I've been in education for a long time, that's pretty much unheard of, and that's why, as a Verona resident, parent, everything, I, that investigation of the outsourcing, you can call it an RFP, we all know, I'm not, I didn't want to do this, but thank you for reconsidering, but it just, it changes a lot within the educational community when you're taking an outside agency, so thank you very much for reconsidering, so I, I want to.
Do you use an RFP, a TPC, right?
Uh, yes, that, I didn't know that, actually, I have, I have heard of that in, yeah, some districts, yeah, I have, but, so, and I don't think I have as much experience with that as I do with parent professionals that have been outsourced, so that's why I'm sticking to what I know from my experience, and just thinking that maybe, you know, I learned from you one year, maybe you'll, you know, learn something from people that have tried it before, from other districts that have gone through that.
Outsourcing, take them off the table, and the outsourcing, and, 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 and there's some issues with some of the HR-related topics.
Okay, and then the other thing, I, because I didn't get a chance to answer the last time, was, was the statement about the increase from 500,000 to 900,000 on cost of parent professionals in 14 years. But what people have to know, because, um, yes, there's a great number of them, because the data in the state, in every district, you will see an increase of keeping students in districts, which we want, you know, we want to educate our own kids, okay? So, so that, you know, we can go on about every little thing, but saying that that... So, so that, you know, we can go on about every little thing, but saying that that is like an astonishing increase, you have to look at the savings of all those students that you kept in districts.
That would be to make the argument that aides are important and we need to retain them. We're not making any other argument. Aides are important and we need to retain them. We need to reduce the turnover rate. We've grown the number of aides for those same reasons, because they do make sense in most cases to have an aide where 10, 15 years ago you didn't have an aide. That's why we've increased the number of aides. We've increased the salaries of aides within certain limits and boundaries. But we're still around the same model of hourly wages. So one of the things we've talked about in committee and shared with the board back in February was, for example, does it make sense to move away from hourly wages and up to salary? Even though it's a part-time salary, but it's no longer hourly, right?
But the increase of 40,000 was considered a cost, but that is.
It's just, that's like saying that the salaries of teachers totally changed because we have more teachers today than we did 15 years ago.
Um, I didn't take it as just that they wanted to, you know, set firms and, but.
It's not about saying you want aides and not on the HR or, which is a little bit of a turnover, I think you're saying the same thing.
We're, yeah, we're saying the same thing, but I don't think we're getting to the resolution of it in the same way. And hopefully that's going to happen now that it's being looked at a little bit more closely. And that, and thank you for listening to the many, many community members, whether it was power professionals, teachers, or parents, or just residents of the town, because it was obvious that this was important to us. And we thank you very much. I do anyway.
Before you leave the committee, I'm sorry, I was just writing down the list of things that you were saying were the important issues. I just want to make sure I didn't miss anything that you said. Job security, salaries, continuity, communication, respect.
Um, several, yeah. Yeah, so, and fair work conditions. And as the administrative staffs get stipends or the administrative assistants get stipends for a bachelor degree, some people also give stipends if they're trained in AED or they have a bachelor's or whatever. So it's some, you know, something that you may want to offer. If you can offer to an administrative assistant, if you can offer to people that have a tremendous responsibility, working with students, I don't really, really need.
Jane Stan, this is Carrie Young Road. I spoke last week as part of the aides, they asked me, power professionals have to represent them. I just have a quick question. I believe you all said you were part of the staff, were part of your staff at Roma. As most people know, there was a bomb at H3 on May 12th. And superintendent sent out the email that the building was safe to go back into Friday. Teachers and staff got this, tell the aides to come. And we check out emails twice a day. So it's not a matter of, we don't have a Gmail set up, we don't have an account set up. It is set up. It was, we were just left off this. This is not something like, soon as you felt your toe, come on back.
So the aides, the aides mailing list was not attached to the old staff mailing list? That's referred.
Okay, perhaps late, but, and another thing, we focus on the 40% that has left.
No, 40% is.
Turnover.
In the last year, it's probably 40%.
What about giving an applause to the 60% who have stayed? Back and the job all done. Or hello in the hall, except for those of us who are.
The work that we're doing to solve the numbers that we have, I think, sorry, because I don't think it did a good job of this, Thomas said, and I certainly didn't do a good job of this. The work that we're doing is not to reward the 40% who left.
I know, I understand.
Let me finish. The work that we're doing is to correct, is to prevent the 60% that are still here from leaving.
The 60% that are here, I hope I speak for most of us who want to stay.
I think you all want to stay. We want you to stay as well. But that's why we're doing this work, to try to correct the issues that result in such high numbers choosing to leave.
Well, you have a perfect form here to say, ladies, you're wonderful, pat on the back, thank you for staying.
Ladies, you're wonderful, pat your back.
Don't patronize me. I know you didn't know. That'd be rude.
It's not rude. I think in 13 years, if there's a board member in Essex County or State of New Jersey that's more complimentary for the staff, I'd like to meet that person.
It would be genuinely well-received thing if it's once in a while, aides got something that said, hey, you're doing a great job, and Hannah, you're doing a tough job.
Thank you.
Hannah Jones, I've been an aide since 2001. Just wanted to say, I never will do this, but I'm just very upset over the whole thing. We're here, most of us aides are here, because we love doing, and I love doing, and I love working with kids. And it's very important to me, as hands to go here, to see how far they've come. I'm loving the work, wonderful teachers that I have, work with in past years. And seeing who's disrespect we got from our meeting, and Janet Hurd was awful. And things that he had said to us, basically, you're here for the money, leave, and she wanted things. We're not here, I mean, yeah, money's good. We work hard, but we don't, nobody recognizes us. Except for the teachers that we work for. And like I said, our endorsement, we're the teachers that I've worked with. But I, I'm just here to say that you just want to go respect, maybe a little more money in a snow day. We're not, we're not asking, we're not asking for a lot. I, I just don't get it. I have two children running from school system, I live in Verona. I just don't get it. I just don't get it at all. That we're not asking for benefits, we're not asking for 40,000 dollars, we're asking for a snow day, a six day, and a little bit more money. I mean, you have 15 years, the money you're making, I mean, people could end up nuts. That's what I want to say, because we are here for the children. I love what I do. And then most of the aides that I work with love what we do. And you want to keep us here, because we're here for the kids.
We want to keep you here.
My name is Paul Vina, Seven Glenwood Road. I just wanted to make sure that I heard you guys correctly, that you said you're going to conduct a third-party poll of the aides and the teachers to take a vote on whether or not to join the union?
Yeah, the unionization process can take one of two forms. The aides, or any group that wants to join the association, does that through a vote. Culturalization clause. And then if the majority of that universe of people sign those cards, the board can do, take one of two reactions. One, say, okay, fine, pass a resolution to recognize you as part of the association, now if you don't. Or B, say, no, let's follow the PERP laws. The PERP is the public employee's relationship for the state. And have them conduct a, a, a unionization vote process, which is the same thing that they did.
Right, and if the, and if the vote on that is to join the union, you'll accept the results of that.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure that I understood it correctly. I'm going to be brief. I was up here last time.
That was, that was never a question.
Right, okay. I just, I want to thank you guys for dropping this idea of RFP and outsourcing. I just want to say that. I know a lot of people spoke here last week. I know you've spoken to people in intervening time. I think you realize what an emotional issue this is for us. I think you probably, I'm sure you realized it before, but if you didn't, maybe now you realize it even more. So the attachment that the parents have with these aides and how much we rely on them and how much, you know, they mean to us, they mean a lot to us, they take care of our children. I know you, I know you understand that, but I think maybe after the last meeting, you appreciated it, so.
Well, I can stress that prior to last week's meeting, for over a year, 18 months, maybe, this topic of aides turnover, retention of aides, and the job irrelevance of the jobs that they do, has been at the forefront of every special education and curriculum committee meeting that I've, I'm on both of those committees. I'm telling, Shell's on it now, right? Bees was on it prior. This has been, it's been at the forefront of what we do. It is the number one topic that Mr. Morel is hoping to take to the board. By far. So for anybody to walk away thinking that the board has a lack of respect, a lack of appreciation, or a lack of.
Well, again, I just want to thank you for taking the action. I want to thank you for not pursuing it. I think you're doing the right things. I understand this issue is not over. You know, I'm a parent in this town. If I can be a resource to you guys in any way, I would be happy to help out. So again, I just want to thank you for doing, for taking that action.
My name is Brad DePerry, as well as Seago Road, father of a special ed's child. My wife also works as an aide. She can speak for herself as far as the judge, she's not a component, she chooses to. I'm speaking as a parent. And I do appreciate that you have postponed or, you know, eliminating this RFP. But there are still some issues that I did want to discuss. First, I'm convinced that you've actually established that there is a turnover issue. With the numbers that you gave to us at the last meeting, you included six new hires. And I understand that that's work, and that's work to hire them, but that's not turnover. Turnover is, the definition of turnover is the rate at which people leave a place, company, et cetera, and are replaced by others. If I eliminate your six new hires, I've got a turnover ratio of about 28%. On a macro, because it's tough to get numbers on, you know, education, on a macro, so from the US Bureau of Labor Statistics, basically, total separation referred to as turnover and total separation is about 3.5% per month. You guys do 10-month seasons, that would equate to about 35% turnover that you should expect. I'm looking at 28% to 35%, and I'm not seeing a turnover issue. Unless my numbers are wrong, unless you guys did not include those six new hires in your turnover ratio.
So we have both numbers. We have the turnover rate of the people in seats at the start of the year, plus the churn, what we called it in the last meeting, with the additional positions that have to be filled. Because that is a constant end of flow, number of students that require an aide, a reserve agent, right? The statistics that you have from the Department of Labor, Labor Statistics, I'm sure are accurate. What we don't see in, in the universe of aides, certainly around laboring districts or districts like ours, is anywhere near a 30% turnover rate in these. So it may be true from a Department of Labor Statistics macro point of view, for purposes of aides in education, you don't see that high turnover.
That's fine. I'd like to see the numbers for this summary or whatever you guys are able to give us when that presentation comes out. It was a multi-page presentation from a familiar level here. I'm also unconvinced that we really need, it was discussed at last meeting that it required about a one-month process to vet and hire new aides. You know, I did a half an hour research. I didn't do it, Tom, I printed out a bunch of stuff in a half an hour. And Glassdoor.com, which is a, a frequent site for both employment information as well as, I can find some job opportunities on there. On the first page, I just looked up special education prepared professional jobs. And I can see that Monroe Township has two anticipated special education paraprofessional already, you know, open, or open positions in anticipation of needing in the future. I also recall back in, I don't know, 100 years ago, we had a very robust substitute list. I don't know how much that substitute list is on, but there actually used to be, you know, maybe somebody can back me up here. It's been a kind of a waitlist to get the regular paraprofessional jobs. You were on the sub-list for a year or two before you were actually able to get.
Still have it, yeah.
So there's still a waitlist. If there's a waitlist, why is there a month turnover? In order to hire the new, you know, the substitute.
Waitlist up for substitutes, hiring a permanent is a different process. You have to advertise.
Already advertised. And then you can bring them in as a substitute until the opening ceremony.
So you have to advertise, you have to conduct the interviews, you have to do background check. And then has to be adopted in a board resolution at the next meeting, which could be a meeting to a next one. So soup to nuts, the whole process is like.
All right, so in order to go from a substitute list to a permanent, you require a board resolution.
Right, because it's a hire.
So spend time off when the board meets.
Needs twice.
All right, a bunch of them need my points no longer applied, because I was a little pissed off. But, I mean, I do want to bring this up. As far as the fiscal responsibility of bringing even the agency, and I'm not sure how much you guys actually researched that. I'm sure you did some, but real quick.
You did very little purpose of the resolution last time, was it different?
All right, but you couldn't have done any of that on your own, because again, half an hour. I went on Indeed.com, which is another job search site. I looked up some of the agencies that deal with this. I found Mission One, which is actually, my sister-in-law works with them. And just as a substitute issue with paraprofessionals in her district. The featured review, you know, from Indeed.com is, it's a job. Training is minimal. They tell you what not to do and do not offer alternative options to help you. If you have a good group, it can be fun, but the company itself, if it feels robbing you. The school employing you pays, for example, hundreds a day, or you get paid eighty a day. Where is the extra money going for this nonprofit utilization? I've seen similar with others, the other site that I saw was Source for Teachers. I'm not sure that they're not the same company, but they seem to be next door to each other in terms of. But that's a 38% premium on top of salaries. 38% premium. We've established last meeting, the next year's budget for the paraprofessionals was $900,000. You just bumped that at a 38% premium to 1.23. It's a big increase, a $337,000 right off the top. You can't negotiate better terms than that, which I found troubling.
Found troubling, that we couldn't negotiate better terms than that?
That you couldn't negotiate better terms than that, because your existing staff will outgo to an agency for that. All right, and again, this is macro numbers, from both a Bloomberg article and a Center for American Progress article. Typically, the cost of turnover for positions earning less than $300,000 annually, and you stated that nobody earns over $20,000 in these positions, is 16% of an employee's annual salary. All right, if I reverse engineer that, even enter 40% turnover rate, what you'd have to pay is a premium for every single one, you're willing to pay, in theory, 38% premium on top of every single paraprofessional, you would have to negotiate that down for every single paraprofessional below 6% over, overcharge for what they pay to these people offering. I don't think you guys are getting comfortable with this.
Yeah, so the agency that was abandoned by us to propose was not to, as an agency made us offer prices of the salaries of the aides and the jobs of aides. But the idea, as you said, is dead, because it was a proposal to see if there was an agency out there that would even participate in such a proposal. So the information that you have is all true, I've seen websites myself. What we're not doing is entertaining the standard of the agency and all the sources.
And just real quick, as far as, I'm sure you guys have been discussing this, you know, the timeframe that you are saying, you know, 18 months a year. In April 2015, Rutgers came out with a study of Jersey City. Jersey City in 2014 passed an order that's requiring all private sector workers receive a minimum number of earned sick days to recover from their own illnesses, or to care for sick family members. All right, you know, I mean, it's a big document. Even at work, I don't ever tend to get much past the executive summary. And then the executive summary, right here in bold print, employers reported an increase in productivity, the quality of new hires, and reduction internal. Among the businesses, 31.7% saw the increase in productivity, improved quality of new hires, or a reduction in turnover due to the law. Among those who had changed their policies, so they hadn't offered any sick time at all, those who had changed their policy to the law, 41.8% reported at least one of these benefits. This came out as you guys were starting the research, or in the middle of the research, on how you could deal with and improve upon the turnover rate, which again, is, you know, still questionable. In my mind, until we get those other numbers, right there, it came out at the beginning. Seems like a pretty simple fix. It's not a ton of money. It's what they're asking for as far as the respect goes. You know, snow days, when your title's out sick, maybe they get paid, they'll get sent home unpaid. It's very difficult on their schedule not to know which days they're in the order and not. not, if you have a child that's out for, you know, an extended bonus, you could be out of work for weeks, two weeks at a time without any notice. And those are the kinds of benefits, we'll call them, that this group team will be going. You know, I don't want to speak for all of them, but as a parent, these are the kind of benefits that I would want them to have, and whether retaining them for the great schools, which is our job.
Good evening. Denise Palacastro, 70's Capone, at Livingston. I am the Interfield Representative assigned to Verona, and I've worked with many people over the last three years, and I've always enjoyed coming to Verona. I think the strength of the board and the association has been the ability to communicate and solve problems. And I think we need to take a minute and talk about the need to reopen the lines of communication. At the last meeting, it was clear that everyone in the room was frustrated. But I'm a guest to Verona, and the one common theme that I saw from everyone was that every single person wanted the best public schools for the children of Verona. It was clear that the board had some concerns, citing a specific concern with retention. And it was clear that the public and the staff was upset by the decision to even consider Our theme tonight, communication. I think we can resolve them ourselves. I still worry about the chatter that is currently occurring. I've heard about staff receiving phone calls and emails from various stakeholders clarifying positions. I think we need to stop reacting to each other and start talking to each other. While I know that the Public Employment Relation Commission, that's PERC, requested and is reviewing our authorization and designation cards, I hope I can clarify some of what we are looking for. The unrecognized units, the powers and the tech support, should have similar working conditions that the recognized units have. We should know what their work year is. We should know what the work day is. Do they have the equipment that they need? Do they get a break? Do they get a lunch? What happens when they're sick? What happens if there's a snow day? What happens on a delayed opening? When do they get paid? What happens if that payday falls on a weekend? Do they have due process? Do they get evaluated? How often would they get evaluated? What happens on professional development dates? I don't think the public realize that the powers who work 29 hours are earning anywhere from $350 to $420 a week. And the powers who do make $420 a week were told it was likely that their salary would be reduced next year. Without any defined working conditions and a salary that roughly meets the poverty level, I am not surprised to have a retention concern. It was very clear at the last meeting that moving to an outside company would not save money. So instead of helping other people make money, let's invest that in the existing staff. Let's bargain a contract that is fair for both sides. Let's start respecting each other at the negotiation process. Let's remember that we're all on the same side, and that is to provide quality education to the children of Verona. I'm still asking that you abandon the idea of exploring an outside company even after the dust has settled, and open the door to communicate with the VDA and with the NJEA. I think we can do this. Thank you.
We're still getting Thursday night, correct? Of course, seven o'clock Thursday. So I'll be there too. But communication with the NJEA and the VDA is always there. The work that the board is doing around the aides predates last week, predates Denise Palacastro, predates the NJEA, with all due respect. Anybody who wants to negotiate on behalf of the aides is free to talk to the board at any time. The process to get the aides into the association is following the PERC process, which we've talked about, we sent a note last meeting. The board doesn't discuss this kind of stuff, doesn't discuss anything between meetings other than in committees. So the board is a vote that last meeting night, two weeks ago, authorized, Mr. DiNizio, go ahead and send a note to the NJEA and VDA saying, "Yep, you prefer to follow the PERC process," or honor the PERC process, I know that's in going to the process there. Once that vote happens, and the staff is part, becomes part of the VDA, I would imagine the next phone company to get through you, because they always cherish them, is going to be, "Let's have a meeting as immediately as possible, and we're going to agree to that, as we always do, and go negotiate from there." Might be able to... There's Pellegrino.
Hello. Megan Pellegrino, 30 Kenwood Avenue. I'm here as a parent, as well as a third grade teacher at FM Brown. And I just want to say thank you. I know I talked about the tech staff last time, but I want to say thank you to all the paraprofessionals that work with FM Brown, and all of the elementary schools, middle school, and high school. You are invaluable to us. The kids love you, and we love you. And we can't be the teachers that we are without the support that you give us, so we truly value you. I have two questions. One is, I know we have used some outsourced aides recently in the district, and are they evaluated, or does anybody come by to check on them?
I think we've only used them in very, very rare cases for aides.
Such as?
In a pinch, like we couldn't get any of the subs.
We've had one in the building for a little while, so I was just wondering.
Yeah, so there's, Mr. Moriello, come up and answer that question.
But I think the question is, to what extent have we relied only on the outside service versus our own?
Well, if you have outsourced aides in the building, who is checking in on them to make sure that they're doing, because that shouldn't be the teacher's responsibility, since they're outsourced, it's not a principal's responsibility. So who's checking to make sure that they're doing the job that they're doing here?
In the instances, I think we have one, one paraprofessional that's outsourced at this time, and in that situation, because of the timing of the end of the year, it doesn't make any sense to go and hire somebody permanently when there's a relationship with that paraprofessional.
And that's with the support of that.
Correct, correct. And in that minor instance, because it's rare, Mr. Moriello coordinates that with the outsourced company. But for the most part, we utilize the outsourced companies, Mr. Moriello stated, in order to use it as a stopgap measure while we're trying to make sure that we have somebody who's going to be in there permanently.
And that's only in the context of subs.
So it's very refreshing in here right now. Very cool. So I have a proposal for an outsourced initiative. I was looking for a resume for air conditioning tonight, and there wasn't one. So if we're going to outsource anything, please come to my classroom, room 13, FM Brown. It was a hot box today, and will continue until the end of this year. So if we're going to outsource anything, I vote on outsourcing.
So 13 years ago, I got on Board of Education, and I had a staff meeting. I have to tell the story, I can't. And so I sat in front of the auditorium, when the teachers came back to school that year, introduced myself, and said, "Here's the top three things we're going to both try to do." And one of them was, what ended up being the $33,000 construction. Megan Pellegrino, Megan Clancy at the time, raised a hand, and came up and just berated me for about 15 minutes on how she opened up the map. It was a map, I think it was, and it fell on our head, and, you know, until that's resolved, you know, the board of that has no respect for teachers, you know, you know.
And to say we have a great board.
And now we have a relationship, and there's no map on our head.
I use all digital, thanks for that.
My name is Captain Christine Towne, I'm a resident of Bruce Springsteen. I just want to say thank you very much for letting us do the analysis. I just have a question. You talk a lot about the Special Education Committee, and as a parent, how can I get informed about what goes on? I visit open for the public, I ask them.
No, so the special education, so the board, the board, the job for the Board of Education, the five board members is a job with governors, something you approach the board of governors. So we're not legally able to run the school, know what you want to do, et cetera. So our job, you have five subcommittees, and there's two reasons to do that. The first and predominant reason to do is it allows us to get to a lot more detail with board oversight and report to the other three board members. So every board committee is two board members. We do committee reports at every meeting, and every board committee meets with the superintendent and designee for that discipline. So for example, there's a curriculum and special ed committee, that's a committee. That's Mr. DiNizio, Mr. Moriello, and Mr. Villa, along with President, Ms. Bardino, myself as the two board members. We have a finance committee, Mr. DiNizio, Ms. Bardino, Ms. Freski and I. We have a community resources committee, Mr. DiNizio, Mr. Freski, Mr. Unis. The NG committee, for all matters buildings and grounds, including referendums. And then the athletics committee.
How do you get the information of, because you were saying like the 40% turnover, and it's not, it hasn't, this is not new, things like that, it's a committee, how do we, like I didn't know that it was a big problem, because...
Most people didn't know.
Yeah.
The, so the committee, we do a committee report every, but we just did one tonight for the committee.
I know, so do they report back, and then you can be brought at this, okay.
Yeah, we always, just like I said, we usually do the committee meetings after the first board meeting of the month, we meet, second meeting of the month, and the last meeting of the month, because of the time of the year, finance met, because of the topic at hand by the aides, we call it special, special end meeting, that met, and then community resources met because of project.
I have one other question. I know that the aides are now going to be certified, that they have to take a test, and I mean...
A test is one of the venues that can be certified.
Okay, I know there is a cost for the test, that, there's a cost for $8, because they have to do the test, and to buy the book to try to pass the test is another $20, if I understand. Are they reimbursed for that?
We purchased several books.
You purchased the books.
And we had some copies made, so that way it could be utilized.
Just so that they're able to try to pass it, so, you know, and are they reimbursed if they pass it?
That's not part of the proposal at this time.
It's not, okay.
But we also, Mr. Moriello had two evening sessions, training sessions, practice sessions around the test. So in order to be able to try to provide opportunities for anyone who wanted to take advantage of that, who may find that helpful.
And the test is for a subset of staff, the staff who modify through copy.
But I know that if they, most people are reimbursed if they take a test and they pass a test, they get reimbursed for it, and I know that they're not getting, you know, their salary as it is, so, you know, I was just wondering if they're, is there a stipend that they reimburse for it?
There are two, there are two ways to satisfy the requirement. If you have 60-plus college credits, associate's degree or better, then you can fulfill their requirement that way. If you do not possess those number of credits by federal law, then another way to satisfy it would be through passing this paraprofessional, things that we were talking about, practices.
One other thing, and so I'm not, I know not that much about how the education system works, so when are they given a contract that, like the people don't know from now on? Because, at the end of the year, do they get it in, in August, have they probably, when are they given a contract? Because I know that one of the aides last year, she said that she hadn't gotten the job because they, she wasn't going for the contracts until late August.
So it depends on, depends on the student need, the number of students that require aides, and in some cases, the, so the experience as aide to manage can move around.
So the safety say that the terms we have now, since we do have such a, you know, potentially could be given a contract.
One of the important pieces...
One of the things on the agenda is how efficiently we believe we are forecasting the changes that we need, because we could end up in situations where you have to hurt the aides, and then the number of students graduate at, and you need those aides.
And one of the important pieces of feedback that we also received was also that, exactly what you just said, for years, the aides have been, it's been very, very late, there's been notification, there's also been...
They have to find another job like that.
Right, of course, naturally. So one of the things that Mr. Moriello shared in the education committee was, "That's way too late, so we need to move the process back." So he's beginning the interview process in order to make sure that we have these placements with our current aides, so that way we can do that in June, and they can receive notification by July. So at least there's time for them to kind of, like anxiety can subside, knowing at least that there's an end in sight, where they'll be able to know that they're going to have a job, know that there's going to be a student that they're going to be with, and then prior to school beginning, having an opportunity for some training, also having an opportunity to know who that student is and what those needs are. Because some of the feedback that we have received this past year, earlier on, when Mr. Moriello came, was, it was commonplace for aides to come in on the first day of school and find out on those days that that's who those students were. So that's something that clearly needs to be corrected. We don't believe that that's a good, a good practice, right? So those are things...
Now you feel it, so a lot of times, they're not, they don't know.
Absolutely. So how can we expect our aides to be fully equipped and prepared in order to do the best job of kids if the district isn't providing an opportunity for them? So that's only one little tidbit of conversation that we've been having, making sure that we're moving everything back. What we're trying to do is rectify a lot of the issues that have served us and have been brought to our attention, and we are fortunate that people have shared that with us, and trying to come up with a way in order to solve these problems as effectively as possible. And some things do cost money, and some things don't, right? So something like that is just a matter of, well, let's just start the process earlier and make sure that we can get this going.
Great, thank you, Pat. I just wanted to add too, that there's just a lot of moving parts, and I know as a special education teacher, I have IEP meetings constantly now, so some of those IEPs are not getting renewed until June to know what's needed for the following year. So that's, I think, part of the discussion as well, is that maybe not those things that we can allow.
What she said, would that imply that the aides would be getting a contract, or just an evaluation?
We're going to be moving towards contracts as well, yes.
When we hire, the question from the back was, will aides be getting contracts? When we hire aides already on resolution, we put a few year timeframe.
That's correct.
So the resolutions, when aides are hired, aides usually not at the board meetings, you see the resolutions themselves, but you can see some of the resolutions even on there tonight, where we hire a staff member that stipulates September 1st through June 30th.
But if something has got a better sign?
Sorry, correct. So the contract is, I don't want to call it a technicality, because it may sound like I'm diminishing it, I'm not. My point is, is that when we make a commitment to an aide in the hiring, the resolution itself reads for the year. Unless it's a special situation, like a long-term service or something, like returning. I'm sorry.
They have, because they have no paper that says that, they often think that tomorrow they would say...
Right, so the comment was, aides believe that you can, we can just determine tomorrow, then you're gone. So there's only two reasons why we would do that. One, the aide is absolutely not working out, and in the interest of the student, then they should be gone. Or B, the need for that student to have an aide has ceased, so the student graduates, for example, there's no need for that aide for that student. That might be still the need for an aide somewhere else, which is what we think that is the question. You get a good person who's an aide, and remember, the problem we have when it comes to the turnover, also manifests itself in our ability to hire high caliber people. When we get an aide for any staff member that's high caliber, we want to keep that person by any means possible. So we'll always recycle that, if the student that made that aide discovery, you know, we'll look to put that aide somewhere else.
I was going to go back there.
Especially on the microphone.
I'm back again. Some of us have been here a very long time. I'm gone, I'm probably not here. Was there a way we could have ever seen them?
Seen?
Quote, contract, quote, resolution, quote, whatever this was. Yes. Where are their file kept? Where is their, you know, I'm at Whitehorn, I have a file I carry around where I'm supposed to be, what I'm supposed to do.
Close to the website. On the board, on the board, on the board of education website.
So we don't physically get something, like we physically, when we've been valued before, we leave with a physical piece of data.
So what I was describing was, when we hire, the way the resolutions are written, we're going to authorize the spending for a certain position. Mr. DiNizio was telling us that we're moving to, I mean, aides can have a contract for a specific group.
Right, okay.
Right, so, but this is, this is, when it's a board resolution, that's a binding, essentially a binding contract.
Right, a binding contract that we don't, don't sign, but we have.
And it's on, posted on the website, yes, and it's a, it's all formal board business. Everything that's done in the district has to be formally approved in Board of Education through recommendations, every single hire.
It's all, we didn't sign that, yet we signed an evaluation. In the past, we've signed evaluations, so it's a lot sided in my head.
Right.
The contract was, I don't want to say it's more important than the evaluation.
Well, it's just as important, that's why.
But it, it seems that in the past, we've signed off on evaluations, but we've never signed off on. Now I have work, if there's a district with contracts where I have some, so.
And that's what we're spending, where they're all trying to, like you said, you need nine years, and we have a party, and I do, every other week. What happens in business?
I got, just one quick question.
You have to come to the microphone, because I've recorded.
Go ma'am, 41, do I? Talking about what you were saying, that you say, how certain, from how the contract, but is that, you're saying, is a salary for aide person, or any?
No, so they say, so we, yeah, so.
So, you know, I'm asking, is that person getting a contract, or is it just hoping to any?
No, so, when we hire legally, the board has to vote on and pass a public meeting resolution with person's name. Salary, and duration for that position.
So it'd be paraprofessional, person's name, and we, so we expect the.
So for example. So new staff, Christine Barson for VHS, teaching Spanish, VA step nine, $57,581, September 1, 2016, to June 30, 2017. Okay, our next meeting is going to be on June 14, confidential session at 7, but we'll. Open session following at the.